And ask that we all please rise while our colleague Ms. Marmian leads us in the pledge of allegiance. Everyone could remain standing for a minute, Mr. DeWitt.
Ms. Charlton, I'd like to have a moment of silence in the remembrance of the 78th anniversary of D-Day, which was yesterday.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Okay, again, welcome everyone to the members of the public who have dialed in or joined us on the WebEx tonight. Please know that you are muted and will not be heard by board members, and there will be no live public comment until called for during the meeting. As we typically do, we'll accept public comment on any voting items on the agenda tonight, except for minutes. Members of the public who are joining remotely and wish to provide public comment should log into the WebEx and use the chat function to indicate that you'd like to be heard on a particular item. Members of the public are always encouraged to send their comments and questions in writing to the board at the following email, BOF@fairfieldct.org. If you do, please remember to include your name and your address, as you would with live comment. Okay, so we have a lengthy agenda this evening. I do anticipate a number of the items will be handled quickly. And Item 5, which is a confidential legal update, will be taken up in executive session, and discussion on that item will therefore be closed to the public. I do also want to note for the public, this is our board's last regularly scheduled meeting before the summer break. I expect we'll probably have some committee meetings over the summer, which will be noticed to the public as they're scheduled. And any committee updates that are available tonight will be heard as part of Item 12 on the agenda. So with that, we will move to Item 3, to hear, consider, and act upon a request from the Chief Fiscal Officer to transfer $419,317.88 from general fund contingency to various accounts per the attached schedule in the fiscal year 20 -- in the fiscal '22 year for the PETA, ECC, and Nurses contract settlement. So the attached schedule I just referred to, or that's referred to in the agenda, is within the posted backup. It's pages 1 through 4. Can I have a motion to put this before us? Ms. Marmian, seconded by Mr. DeWitt. Okay, this motion is before us. And I think, who's going to present this? Mr. Schmidt or Mr. -- okay, Frank? Thank you.
Frank will do it.
Thank you. Frank, go ahead, please.
Sure, so the 400 and -- so there's -- and we're just on Item 3, correct? We're not doing 3 and 4?
Correct, just Item 3.
Okay. So this $419,317.88 is a transfer from contingency that we need for various retro payments, retroactive payments that have had to go out for union contracts that have settled. So that would be PETA, Nurses, and ECC. For some of them, it's going to cover, you know, for example, PETA, the contract was signed, I believe, in April. And so you have May and June that have the new negotiated salaries that are now being paid out. So this contingency transfer is also to cover us through the end of the year. And it is just a budget transfer. And the backup shows how it's for PETA. These employees vary throughout the town, in the police department, public works, engineering, et cetera. So that schedule there is how this $419,000 will be allocated among those various departments.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments from the board? Ms. Marmian?
Thanks. Can you, from memory, is there a specific amount that is typically budgeted for these contract settlements? In other words, is this -- did you give us a range? Just remind us of, does this fall within what you were kind of projecting, et cetera?
Sure. So it is based on amounts or expected percentage increases for contracts that we have. If we want to discuss the contractual percentage increases specifically, I think we would need to go into executive session for that. But it did fall within what we had projected.
What was -- what -- do you have that amount that you projected? I'm just worried -- I'm just interested in where we fall within that projection.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Ms. Marmian. I think -- so I think we can discuss the actual contract settlement percentage, but I think the comparison to the original estimate, to the extent we have questions on that, we -- I think we may -- we can discuss that when we go into executive session later.
That's fine. I just didn't know if there was a range that was actually budgeted. I don't need to know specifics, but we're within the range, is your answer?
Yes, we're within the range.
Thank you.
And the contracts that settled, the oldest one was ECC's. Theirs expired in 2019. And their contract settled at, I think it was 2% the first year, 2 and 1/4 the second year, and 2 and 1/2 the third year. So for this current fiscal year. So that's what they settled at. PETA, all of them, all the ones that have settled so far, they've settled about between 2 and 2 and 1/2% for the years that they've covered.
All right. Other questions from board members? Ms. Leclerc?
Sure. So for fiscal '22, the approved contingency number was 1.486 million. And for fiscal '23, the approved -- well, I'll just leave it to fiscal '22, because this is what it's in regards to. How much have we used? I'd have to look that up. I could look that up for you and get back to you if you just give me a few minutes. Actually--
Has there been anything used from contingency other than for the settlement? Could we take the 1.486 minus what we're approving to transfer tonight?
Yeah, I don't think anything's come out of it, but I just don't have it in front of me, so I just want to be sure. But yeah, I'm pretty sure that nothing has come out of it, except this is the first thing that'll be coming out of contingency.
Mr. DeWitt?
Yeah, we -- it's a small amount, but we did pay Mr. Santafanti out of contingency, I believe.
Was that transferred this year or last year? I can't remember. Might be this year.
I believe it's in this fiscal year.
Okay.
I think it was after July of 20--
It might have been like maybe $10,000 or something like that.
$10,000 or $20,000. It's not a significant number, but I think it did come from there.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from board members? Mr. DeWitt?
Yeah, and maybe this is unfair to ask Frank, and maybe Jared has the answer. You know, we, as a town, we're hoping to stagger these contracts, so we're not negotiating four, five, six, seven, 10 contracts all at the same time. Are these all going to have the same expiration date? Or, you know, is April of 2022 going to be the monument date for all of these, and then they'll all, you know, renew at the same time in two years or whatever the duration is?
Yeah, so I think that would probably be the -- I think Jared and/or Jim would be the best to speak to that. I could say that the ECC, I think, what they negotiated is going through the end of fiscal year 2023. So theirs expires 6/30/2023. PETA is 6/30/2023. And I believe Nurses is 2024.
So they are staggered. Could we could--
That's right.
Okay, so they did remain staggered, then. So that's good. So the fact that we're closing them all now is just kind of catch-up, but they're still staggered, if we can execute on time going forward, right?
And Police goes out to 2025.
Perfect. That's great. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Other questions from board members? Okay, seeing none, we can put this to a vote. All in favor of the motion to transfer funds as detailed in Item 3 of the agenda? Please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, it is unanimous for those here, so 8-0. Thank you, everyone. All right, so we will move on to the similar item 4. This one is to hear, consider, and act upon a request from the Chief Fiscal Officer to transfer $7,066 from the WPCA contingency to various WPCA accounts per the attached schedule in the fiscal '22 year for the PETA -- I'm sorry, do I have this right? Let's see. For the, yes, PETA contract settlement. Okay. Can I have a motion to put this item before us? Mr. Curley, seconded by Mr. DeWitt. Okay, Frank, you want to -- anything to specific on this?
No, much of the same. Just one thing I forgot to mention is that these contingency amounts also include the -- what we would need to pay out for Social Security and FICA and stuff like that. So that's the only thing I did.
Okay, yep.
Yeah, I just know this is probably clerical in nature, but the agenda in minutes referenced the $7,066, which ties the wages, but there's $540 in FICA for this item, so the revised number should be $7,606 per Page 5 of the backup.
Okay, good catch.
Yeah, sorry about that. That was clerical error on my part.
Yeah, no worries. I just want to make sure it gets captured.
Okay, so you agree with that. So the number should be 7606. Go ahead, Mr. DeWitt.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to amend Agenda Item Number 4 to read, to transfer the amount of $7,606 rather than what stated is $7,066.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Curley? Okay. Do we have to all vote on that to amend? All right, all in favor of that amendment? Okay, it is unanimous, 8-0. Okay, so I will then make a motion to, or let's put this to a vote, to approve the amended motion to transfer $7,606 from the WPCA contingency to the various WPC accounts per the attached schedule. I did want to note, which I did not mention before, that attached schedule, which includes the revised numbers, is on Page 5. So all in favor of that motion? Aye. Okay, the motion passes 8-0. Thank you, everyone. And thank you, Frank. Okay, so the next item on the agenda, Item 5, is to hear an update on the retirement program for the employees of the Town of Fairfield versus Allianz Global Investors with Town Attorney James Baldwin. As I mentioned earlier, this item includes confidential information related to a legal settlement, so I will make a motion to move us into executive session to hear this item. Seconded by Ms. Marmian, all in favor? Okay, it is -- passes 8-0. Okay, so we will move into executive session. Seconded by Mr. Testani, all. Aye, okay. It is unanimous, except for Mr. Matola, who stepped out of the room. All right, so we are back in public session, having completed Item 5 on the agenda. We discussed the matters that were listed on the agenda in Item 5. No votes were taken. And the board also discussed some questions that were related to Items 3 and 4 with respect to contingency amounts for unsettled contracts. And again, no votes taken on any of those items. All right, so we are going to move on to Item 6 on the agenda, to hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Director of Health. This item is coming before us prior to the Board of Selectment approval, so it is contingent upon the BOs approval at its 6/13/22 special meeting, and also requires RTM approval. Resolve that the Director of Health requests an increase in the estimated revenue for state grants in the amount of $252, $155, and $0.11 to cover the cost of Fairfield's continued efforts to further Fairfield Health Department's response to COVID-19 and other emerging infections. And further resolve that the First Selectman is authorized to make, execute, and approve on behalf of the Town of Fairfield any and all contracts or amendments thereof with the State of Connecticut Department of Public Health to conduct activities described in the Epidemiology and Laboratory Capacity Enhancing Detection Cooperative Agreement mouthful, with an anticipated contract period of March 1, 2022 to February 29, 2024. These costs are 100% reimbursable. Can I have a motion to put this item before us? Ms. Marmian, seconded by Mr. Testani. Okay, the backup for this item is on Pages 6 and 7 of the backup posted online, and we have with us this evening Mr. Sands Cleary to take us through this item. Mr. Cleary?
Sure, thank you very much, Madam Chairman. The -- this is a grant from the federal government through the State of Connecticut. This is the continued funds for the town's COVID response. What we plan to do with this funds is essentially hire three staff members to continue and really take on the remaining of the COVID work that is ongoing with, you know, case investigation and outbreak investigation, as well as planning efforts moving forward. And so the -- and it's an evolving thing. You know, we don't quite have the contract yet back in the state. We've submitted our application, and, you know, it's -- the funds are essentially guaranteed. It's just a matter of the -- they are -- the CDC and the state are sort of evolving the contract deliverables as we speak, since some things have changed, you know, with the, you know, we're not doing the same level of contact tracing as before. And so I think that those types of things will happen throughout this grant. There'll be adjustments. But essentially, we are looking to hire up to three individuals on this grant to take on the remainder of the COVID work in a two-year period. But, you know, as you can see, we've already missed over three months of it, and we are waiting on the state and the federal government for the final contract language.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cleary. Comments, questions from the board? Mr. DeWitt?
Just -- thank you, Mr. Cleary. These are temporary employees, I assume, yes?
Yes, these will be temporary employees. Once the grant period ends, the employees' employment would end.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right. Other questions from the board? Okay, seeing none, we can move to a vote. All in favor of the resolution set forth in Item 6 of the agenda? Say aye. Okay, it is unanimous, 9-0. Thank you, everyone. All right, so we are going to move on to Item 7, which is a similar item, to hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Director of Health. Again, contingent on Board of Selectmen approval at their June 13 special meeting and requiring RTM approval. Resolve that the Director of Health requests an increase in the estimated revenue for federal grants in the amount of $50,000 to cover the cost of Fairfield's continued efforts to further develop the Fairfield Medical Reserve Corps, and to continue to promote the integration of the MRC unit into the local public health and emergency response system. And further resolve that the First Selectman is authorized to make, execute, and approve on behalf of the Town of Fairfield any and all contracts or amendments thereof with the National Association of County and City Health Officials to conduct activities described in the NACCHO-MRC RISE Award with an anticipated contract period of May 1, 2022 to December 21, 2022. These costs are 100% reimbursable. So the backup for this item is on Pages 8 and 9, posted online. Can I have a motion to hear this item? Mr. DeWitt? Seconded by Mr. Testani, thank you. Mr. Cleary?
In a similar way, these are federal HHS dollars going through the National Association of County and City Health Officials that are typically the agency we deal with, that they deal with and we deal with, with federal grants for the Medical Reserve Corps. And so this is a six, you know, essentially a six-month-period grant that one of our newest staff members, Kim Nguyen, had taken the lead and applied for, and was awarded a $50,000 grant. And we are, essentially, this is to further build, as we've done in the past, build the Medical Reserve Corps. And, you know, we will hire two part-time people to put together a recruitment campaign to increase the enrollment in our Medical Reserve Corps, which currently has 294 members. And then we will also conduct some training for them and provide some apparel and items like that. And so that's really the -- this is, again, six-month temporary employees, part-time on this grant. And so that's the plan, similar to other grants that we've got for the MRC that they just haven't, you know, we've -- most of them have been in the $5,000 to $10,000 range. This was just part of the abundant funding that's coming down from the federal government for preparedness activities at this point.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cleary. Questions from the board? Okay, I see no questions. So we'll put this to a vote. All in favor of the resolution set forth in Item 8 of the agenda? Please say aye. Aye. Okay, it is unanimous, 9-0. Thank you very much, Mr. Cleary. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
All right, so we are going to move on to Item 8, to hear, consider, and act upon a resolution recommended by the Board of Selectmen further amending and restating a resolution entitled "A Resolution Appropriating $388,000 for the Costs Associated with Construction of a BERM and Pumping Station and Authorizing the Issuance of Bonds to Finance Such Appropriation", to increase the amount of the appropriation to $10,007,765, and to accept a further state grant in the amount of $400,000. So as indicated in the agenda, the fully worded resolution can be found in the posted backup, beginning on Page 10. Can I have a motion to put this item before us? Mr. Testani, seconded by Ms. Marmian. And we have Mr. Bill Hurley here to take us through this one. Welcome, Bill.
Good evening, Board of Finance members. This request is for the wastewater treatment plant, a hardening project. It's a $400,000 grant extension. It's the fifth one from the Connecticut Department of Housing for wastewater treatment plant hardening, which is a berm and pumping station project. The amount increases from roughly $3.6 million to $4 million, and the grant is 100% reimbursable. Due to extra fill quantities and extra soil management from historic contamination, the town made a request to the Connecticut Department of Housing for supplemental funding. The state responded that there was $400,000 of additional money available for the project. So the Department of Housing grant would provide the town the $400,000 to cover reimbursable expenses. The proposed project is to construct an earthen berm and stormwater pump station to protect the Fairfield Sewer Treatment Plant and other critical facilities in this area from future flood events. We had listed the 14 points as background for any official who was not familiar with this project. So basically, I'm just here to answer any questions that the board may have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hurley. Questions from the board? Mr. Curley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hurley, for being here. Just a clarification, the agenda was a little less than clear to me. I just want to confirm, the wording on the agenda talks about increase, a $3.088 million cost increasing to 10, a little over 10 million. It makes reference to the $400,000, but if I understood what you described correctly, the increase is just for $400,000, and that increase would be covered by the grant, correct?
That's correct. I think in order to correct the terminology of the original bond, they had to write down the original amount and what the ultimate price is for the entire project. The $400,000 is for the grant, and that's what's being proposed for today. It was really just to update, I think, the bond, you know, the wording of the bond. This is one of -- this is like the fifth increase, just to let everyone know.
Thank you, Mr. Curley. Other questions? Mr. Walsh?
Bill, getting to the fifth increase. So you guys keep coming back to us for all of these increases. So this one is specifically for the historical contamination, when you guys have been digging into the ground that has been found at the wastes, around the areas that you've been putting the berm? Is that correct?
Well, the steel sheeting--
The steel sheeting, yeah. The steel sheeting, yeah.
Yeah, we had requested the -- because we knew that there was going to be extra costs once we found that contamination. And it was also for, I think it was some additional fill that was needed. And so the, you know, it would cost the town money for the project anyway, so the state is definitely in favor of this project, and that's why they've given us as many increases as they can. And on this one, they did say they had $400,000 that they could provide the town at 100% reimbursement.
So are we basically led to believe that if we put a shovel in the ground at that area, we're going to be hitting contaminated soil, pretty much?
For future, or you mean--
Yeah, for future, because we're talking about having to do a whole sewer treatment plant redo or update in the next four to five years. So if we're going to touch an ounce of soil there, it seems like it's contaminated with historical things.
There's certainly a possibility of that, and I can't dispute that for -- it's just a matter of where -- it depends exactly where the proposed sewage plant expansion is, if it's in areas that are already occupied, say, for instance, a tank, and they're not changing elevations, but replacing a tank, for instance.
Yeah.
There might not be, but you're right, any new excavations, definitely there's that possibility.
Okay. I think this board's going to have to know that for if we decide to do that expansion, the contingency's going to have to be pretty high, because--
Gee, I agree. To properly prepare, unless there's a massive amount of, you know, pre-testing, I would make that same assumption.
Okay. And you have it pretty well mapped of where you found contamination, putting the sheathing and things like that, where we could probably expect to find some historical contamination?
Yeah, we found a lot of it was in filled areas. As you know, the area was previously wetland, and so, you know, they just accepted any fill, you know, brought in from the '40s and '50s.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Other comments, questions from the board on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll put this to a vote. All in favor of approving the resolution outlined in Item 8 of the agenda? Say aye. Okay, it is unanimous, 9-0. Thank you, everyone. All right, so with that, we will move on to Item 9, and this item is for acceptance of the $400,000 grant related to the appropriation we just voted on. grant related to the appropriation we just voted on. I will, I'd like to, actually, this one is long, I'd like to make a motion to put this item before us and waive the reading of the resolution, if that's okay with everybody. Mr. Hurley, Ms. Marmian, second, all in favor of waiving that? Okay. It is unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Hurley, anything to add on this?
No. Like you said, it's really a continuation. It's just formal language.
Any comments or questions from the board? All right. Seeing none, all in favor of approving the resolution in item nine and the acceptance of the $400,000 grant? Please say aye. Aye. Okay. It is unanimous, 9-0. Thank you, Mr. Hurley. Hurley. Hurley's next to me. Hurley and Hurley. All right. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay. We are going to move on to item 10, to hear an update on the Fairfield County Regional Dispatch, ECC. And we, as a reminder for the board, this item's on our agenda. This is an update that was requested during our recent quarterly meeting, I believe by Mr. DeWitt. And that was after we got an update at that meeting that there were, I think, some minor delays in transitioning Westport Police and Fire over. So I don't know who wants to start, Chief Calamars or Captain?
Get the prices right. Okay. All right. So right now, our dispatchers, our Fairfield Police Dispatchers and the dispatcher Fire EMS, they're up there at the center. They've been up there since March 1st, and, you know, things are moving along. And Westport, right now, where they're implementing their CAD system, right now, they don't have the same CAD system in Westport that we have in Fairfield. We have a computer automated dispatch system called NextGen that we're operating with, and they're creating a regional NextGen system. And we're just waiting for Westport to implement that to their administration, to their Westport officers, Westport firefighters, and then the Westport dispatchers. And we think that once Westport's dispatchers are trained on the new system, on our regional dispatch system, we're estimating 45 to 60 days before they can join us.
And is that for both police and fire, the 45 to 60 days?
Oh, yeah. We actually have, there's a good possibility that Westport Fire might move into the facility on, like, July 18th. So that's our goal, to have them in there July 18th. They're just going to dispatch Westport Fire for that time being until Westport Police are ready. We anticipate cross-training during that time. The quicker we could cross-train Westport Police and Fire, Fairfield Police and Fire, the quicker it could become a true regional dispatch center.
Okay. Got it. And the reason I'm asking is I thought during the quarterly meeting, there were two different dates, July and September, for police and fire, so that's why I was asking.
I believe, yeah, July will be for Fire, and September, hopefully, will be Police.
Hopefully. Okay. All right. Thank you. Comments, questions from the board?
Captain Cabal, let me just ask you a question. So you said 45 to 60 days from when they're ready to go and have trained their own people, correct?
That's what we're told, yes.
When do they anticipate having their people trained? So like, what's the total, when you're sitting here today, what are you thinking is going to be the approximate time period of when they will be using the center?
They're actively working, we had a meeting, actually, just today, this morning, with NextGen, along, you know, group meeting with NextGen, Fairfield Representatives of Fairfield Police and Fire and Westport Police and Fire. And they're moving fast and getting, they're just about ready to finalize the NextGen, like, the call types and dispositions, the things that they're going to have to get used to using. And it shouldn't, I don't think it'll take, I estimate, it's going to be a lot of on-the-job training, so it's going to be maybe like a couple of days of training, and once they're trained, then we can start that hypothetical clock.
So it could be by August 1st?
To have them trained? Absolutely.
And no one brought in, or the training's going to take a couple of months, and then it's 45 to 60 days from that date?
I think the training will, I think the training will take less than a couple of months. I think once they implement the system, once they go live with their CAD system.
Yeah.
Especially for the dispatchers, there's only, like, four, like, four or five dispatchers that will need to be trained.
Okay.
That's all the police dispatchers they have now, and I think there's four Fire dispatchers.
Okay.
So that shouldn't take long.
So we'll be well into the first quarter, if not at the end of the first quarter of this current fiscal year, starting July 1st, before we're, so basically, when we see our first quarterly numbers for fiscal year '23, they're going to be off, because Westport probably will not have joined during the first quarter, July, August, September.
Right. Except for the Westport firefighters, they will be onboarded as Fairfield employees prior to July 18th.
Oh, okay. Well, that's good. So some of it will come in.
Correct.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Other questions? Mr. DeWitt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks for being here, Chief, Captain. You know, the long-term plan is to not just be Fairfield and Westport where we're in, bring in other communities. Do we, do you guys think we have a better feel for how long this whole training thing? Because it's been a little haphazard going forward, but the next time we add a community, is this going to be a lot more, can we better estimate when we're bringing in these communities, whether it's New Canaan or whoever that is going to be?
Yeah. I think it depends on the size of the community that joins us. Like, for example, if Easton would join us, just to throw out a town that's close to us, you know, there's only a few dispatchers there, and I think that'd be a very easy transition, if we brought in a smaller community compared to like a community, like, for example, more like if we brought in like a city that joined, that would be more difficult. But a smaller community, I don't think it would take, now that we're going through this, through the trial and error that we've gone through, I think that it'll be a smoother transition to bring somebody else on.
So is it, is it always a given that if we add another community, we're going to end up taking people in from that community, from their dispatchers? Is that always, because, like you said, Easton, maybe we could handle it under the current, you know, workload, but bringing in, like, I can't even imagine, like, Trumbull, right? Exactly. It was a much bigger community, right?
Yeah. Trumbull's a much bigger, yeah.
But is it a given that, no matter what community we add, we'd probably be indoctrinating new people from that community, that, for that dispatch?
Yeah. That's not necessarily true. In fact, the goal is to, you know, seek out agencies that are smaller in size, less of an impact on the dispatch center, and we would be able to utilize the employment that we have at that time while still getting some revenue from that, from that agency.
No, that's, no, that's a great answer. All right. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Other questions from the board? Mr. Testani?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Hi. Good evening. Just, Mr. DeWitt sort of touched on, I've asked before, New Canaan. Fire?
New Canaan had a, New Canaan Fire had an interlocal agreement with Westport Fire Dispatch, and as a result of us taking on Westport Police and Fire, that interlocal agreement, we took that on as well.
So will that be part of this effective July 18th date you referred to earlier?
It will.
And then, just out of curiosity's sake, on the NextGen system that Westport is working to implement, is it safe to say it's going to Fairfield? Is that right, or same system, different?
Yeah. Same system that we are currently using. Westport was a little behind in their technology, the records management and case management system that they were using. So at the time that they moved over to us, natural progression was just, let's, let's get up to speed with where we should be with our CAD system. That probably should have been done earlier, you know, full disclosure, that probably should have been done earlier on their part, like, work that as the, as the center is being built. But they didn't. And, and we are where we are right now. Their conversations with NextGen happened a little bit later. I'll also add, that Pete didn't touch on, is the 911 system is, AT&amp;T is the vendor for the 911 for the state. So when Westport Fire or Police change over into our dispatch center, we are kind of at the mercy of AT&amp;T in having them change over the 911 system. So when, when the calls normally route to Westport, instead, they would route to our dispatch center. So we are kind of waiting for them, and they're kind of waiting for Westport, so these, these cans are getting kicked down the road. We're, we're doing what we can to set milestones so that the, you know, there's like some goal-setting and scheduled dates so that we can try to keep on course.
Has AT&amp;T given you an idea? So let's at least say, Westport says to you tomorrow, Chief, we're done, AT&amp;T giving you, like, is it two days later, a week from now? You know, what kind of timeframe?
I don't have an, I'm sorry. I don't have an exact timeframe from AT&amp;T, but they're up, up there working, like, all week, they've been up there working and trying to prepare for July 18th. So they're aware of the dates and the goals that we have in mind, and I think that, I don't think it would be, they've begun the work now to prepare for Westport Police and Fire coming, and so they're, they'll be ready for Westport Fire on the 18th.
So a call that came into 911 on July 19th, let's say, would be handled efficiently? Is that what they're guaranteeing you? Is that what you anticipate?
Well, you know, one thing, well, Westport Fire, they're going to be there, they don't, as of now, the way they handle, they don't actually handle 911 calls, Westport Police do, so we have time for AT&amp;T to set up those lines.
And just if I can, Madam Chair, I just have a separate sort of topic I'd like to just, number one, I want to compliment the chief and the department for a lot of the communications from the school shooting in Uvalde. I mentioned it at the beginning of the meeting, and Chief, you were proactive in terms of how you were communicating to Fairfield residents about school safety, about active shooter training, but if you could just maybe touch on that briefly and what kind of steps you've taken, and again, I just want to compliment you and the department for, I think, putting a lot of Fairfield residents' minds at ease during, you know, a very tough week that week. So thank you for doing that.
Sure. I brought Captain Eddie Wyah, who is in charge of our school program, and essentially developed the school program that we have. Just as an overview, you know, we're all parents as well, and we're sending our kids to school, and, you know, everybody has that sense of anxiety when you drop your kids off to school, and, you know, what's going on in the world, in the, in the country, it's, makes people uneasy. And I just thought it was important to, the purpose of that email was sent to Dr. Cummings, Cummings to release to the parents and just let them know that, you know, we have, our officers are trained. You know, I wasn't, I wasn't in Texas when that happened, but I can say that I have full faith and confidence in the officers of the Fairfield Police Department, and we have the resources that we need to accomplish what we may need to accomplish if a situation or a critical incident such as that would have happened in, in the town of Fairfield, God forbid. If we wanted to get into more specifics as far as operations and tactics, I'd probably turn it over to Captain Wyah. I'm not sure how much you want to, want to hear on that.
No. I just wanted to get an idea, just sort of touch base off of what you sent out to Fairfield residents, and I think in terms of tactics, people are, for the most part, at least generally aware of a school shooter type of tactical training most police departments undertake, and I know Fairfield does, as do most. So I just think knowing that there's an extra awareness, for lack of a better word, is, could help residents be more calm, so to speak, in terms of how the situation's going to be handled moving forward. So again, thank you, and thank the department for all your conscientious efforts. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Testani. Other questions? All right. Well, thank you both for coming in person. We'd like to see humans here. Usually I have to crane my neck and turn around at the screen, so...
We tried something.
Thank you for coming in person, and thank you, to echo Mr. Testani, thank you for all that you do for the community. Appreciate it. Okay. We are going to move on to item 11, to hear an update on the purchasing policy. So we did have an update on this item from Mr. DeWitt as the committee chair in May, but, yeah, we thought, but we thought it would be helpful to hear from the administration in terms of where they are. So we have, I believe we have Mr. Bremer here to take us through the status.
Pete, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Welcome.
That's great. I'm sorry I'm not there in person, but I feel like, I'm very close to you anyway, so I'm sure this will go fine. Basically, you're absolutely correct. I just received some emails today from Mr. DeWitt, who is the chairman, and we are planning on meeting in the very near term, probably next week. I just have to finalize a few things on my end, but hopefully we'll be meeting next week to go over whatever comments we have, whatever comments the Board of Ed has, to try to get, I mean, the feeling on our, on the administration's behalf, is we've gone through this now a number of times, we'd like to do this only one more time. So we'll get everybody together in a room, we'll get everybody's comments and concerns, and hopefully after that meeting, we'll be able to put a document together that everybody can live with, and so that the Board of Finance can, dare I say, finally vote on it. So I think that's the plan.
Okay. Thank you for Mr. Bremer. Mr. DeWitt, do you have anything to add here?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. So where we are today, just so everyone's completely up to speed, Mr. Santafanti and his team has been charged with helping us with this document. And three weeks ago, four weeks ago-ish, Mr. Santafanti, upon my request, sent out the latest version. I received it. Ms. Charlton received it, and I think Mr. Bremer received it. So the town was in receipt. I then, as the chairman of the Policy Committee, forwarded that on to the Board of Education. I confirmed with, with Ms. Laborius today that the Board of Ed has, is still reviewing it, but they have definite comments, and they're looking forward to having this, this group hug next week, right? And they will be in a position to give us their comments in advance. So, Mr. Bremer, I know that's, that's just a couple hours old, so my apologies for not sharing that with you beforehand, but what, what I wanted to do as a committee and as a chairman is bring us all in a room, you know, document the meeting, make sure that we all understand everyone's inputs. We had a very nice, we had a very successful meeting in, I think it was January or February, where we sat with the Board of Ed and, and in central office, and I think that was a productive meeting. So, as Mr. Bremer said, the goal here is to get everybody's comments, put it on one piece of paper, and then bring it to our board. I'd like to get this signed no later than September, so, because, of course, we're not meeting in July and August, right? But I, I called the chairman today and said, would you schedule a special meeting in August to sign this? And she, she agreed, so, you know, put, be on the lookout for a special meeting in August, hopefully, to get, to get this thing signed, so.
I think everyone in the administration is taking July and August off. We will not be available till before October. No, I'm kidding.
September it is, because you know what? I'm not going to be here in August either, so.
All right. Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Yeah, I think we've, we've now passed the two-year anniversary of that DPW audit, so we really do need to get this put to bed and voted on, and I know the board would like to see it behind us, because that will, adoption of that policy, I think, will complete the implementation of all the recommendations or all the recommendations that are intended or all the recommendations that are intended to be addressed from, from that audit. So, any questions from the Board members? No? Okay. Terrific.
Marmy said godspeed.
Godspeed. Okay.
I'll take it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bremer. All right. So we'll move on to item 12, to hear an update on committee reports. You know, before we head into the summer break, maybe we'll be lucky and we won't have any special meetings this summer. Not sure about that. But before we head into the break, I just wanted to give the committee chairs an opportunity to provide any updates they might have or any information they might want to share with the Board or the public on any, you know, activities or initiatives that might be going on at the committee level over the next few months. So we heard from the, the Purchasing Policy Chair, which is our one active select committee. We have three other standing committees, Audit Committee, Budget Committee, and Fund Balance Committee. I don't know if anyone has an update, Audit Committee, Ms. LeClaire? Sorry to put you on the spot, but.
Sorry. I have to reschedule our, our meeting, and we will do the preliminary pieces to the audit, the planning. But I don't have a real update yet at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Budget Committee, Mr. DeWitt, back to you.
Yes, ma'am. Budget Committee, so Budget Committee is, is Ms. Marmy and myself. And, you know, what, what we've, what I've done over, over the years is, you know, some years we can get away with kind of a cursory look at the budget, but, you know, we've got nine members on this board that have been here less than three years, right? So what I, what I spoke to Ms. Marmy about today is, I'm gonna schedule a meeting, and I'm gonna, six members, that's right, sorry, six members with less than three years, you're right. Thank you. We're gonna schedule our committee meeting, and I'm gonna invite, you're always all invited, but I would really like to have a real kind of nine-member discussion about how we think the budget process went. And, you know, the, there's some talk going on in the charter revision about the budget process. I think it might be a good idea for us to, you know, kind of get together and, it's, I think it'd be very interesting to hear from our newer members and how, how you guys thought, you know, that process went. You know, after doing this for 15 years, you're kind of like, okay, you know, fresh perspective. And then, and then we can figure out who will be the committee chairman next time, because I've been doing it long enough, and it's time to pass that baton to some, to someone else, just in, just in process. So I'll let you guys know when that happens, hopefully, for certain by the, by the end of this month, and I'll try to work around everyone's schedule.
All right. Thank you, Mr. DeWitt, and thank you for doing that. I, you know, we had a lot of long budget meetings. I'm sure there's a desire to have them be more, more, you know, effective and efficient as, as we can. So, you know, I think getting feedback is important, and thank, thank you for taking that on. Fund Balance Committee, any update? Mr. Curley?
Yeah, so we have not met yet, so we don't have a chair. So I'll just speak on behalf of the, the three of us. Jim, Kevin, and I will form that committee when we, when we can put a date on the calendar. I did send an email out to both of you to suggest a couple of dates, or I think I put out five dates. You had mentioned two that did not work for you. So Jim, if you could just.
I'm sorry, Mr. Curley, I didn't see the email, so I'll, I'll take a look for it. I'll do some searches, but I, I apologize if you sent it and I haven't seen it.
Okay.
So otherwise, I would have responded right away.
Understood.
Thank you.
But I, I'll, I'll resend it as well, but there, I put three dates out there for June 15th, 16th, and 23rd. Hopefully, one of those dates works, then we can work to get something on the calendar.
Thank you. Yeah, appreciate that. I know we had, you know, we had robust discussion during the budget process on our Internal Service Fund fund balance, and, you know, general fund is always a topic of interest, and, you know, we've sort of deviated from our practice of, you know, putting money in there every year over the last couple of years for, for reasons that were all discussed and agreed upon. So it's always, I think, good to take those policies off the shelf and dust them off and, and, you know, make sure that they're, that they're getting looked at. So thank you for doing that. I think that's it for committees, unless anybody has any questions? All right. We will move on to item 13, to hear, consider, and appoint the clerk and assistant clerk of the Board of Finance for the next fiscal year ending May 2023. Can I have a motion to put this item before us? Ms. Marmy, and seconded by Mr. DeWitt. Okay. So before we discuss the appointments, just, just briefly, I'll reference the relevant section of the charter that's applicable here. It's Section 8.3, and it states the following, that the Board of Finance shall appoint a clerk and fix the clerk's salary. The clerk shall hold office at the pleasure of the Board of Finance. The clerk may be part-time. The clerk shall keep minutes of board meetings and be the custodian of its books, papers, and data related to the conduct of its business. One. Two, be a certified or licensed public accountant or otherwise have experience in the financial field. And three, have the right to call upon all town departments, boards, commissions, committees, authorities, and officers for such information as the clerk may reasonably require in connection with the duties of the clerk and the responsibilities of the Board of Finance. So as we all know, the town CFO, Jared Schmidt, has been serving as our clerk for the past year. He obviously meets the qualifications outlined in the charter. He's been instrumental in helping this board conduct our business and fulfill our responsibilities. Mr. Schmidt has indicated he is willing to continue to serve in that capacity. So I will put out a nomination to recommend that Mr. Schmidt serve as our clerk for the upcoming fiscal year. Can I have a second? Miss, Mr., okay, Mr. DeWitt. Any comment or discussions from board members? No? Any other nominations? Okay. Seeing none, we can move to a vote to Jared, by the way. You sure you're still willing to do this? You're hesitating.
Let me read it.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. So all in favor of appointing Jared Schmidt as the Board of Finance clerk for the next fiscal year? Say aye. Okay. Nine zero. It is unanimous. Okay. Too late to back out now, Jared. All right. Thank you, everyone. So moving on to the role of the assistant clerk, Jennifer Carpenter has been serving in that capacity. She does a, a great job for our board, organizing agendas, collecting and delivering backup for meetings, coordinating schedules with town officials who come before our board, and generally keeping us all on task. Ms. Carpenter has also indicated her willingness to continue to serve in the role of assistant clerk for this upcoming year, so I would like to nominate her to serve in that role for fiscal '22, '23. Can I have a second? Okay. Mr. Testane, comments, discussions from board members? Okay. Other nominations? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor of appointing Jennifer Carpenter to the role of assistant clerk for the Board of Finance for the upcoming fiscal year? Aye? Okay. It is unanimous. Nine zero. Thank you, everyone. Okay. The next item, 14, to hear, consider, and act upon the draft minutes of May 5th, 2022, and May 17th, 2022. Can I have a motion to put this item before us? Ms. Marmy, and seconded by Mr. Testane. Okay. This item is before us. You all have the draft minutes. Are there any comments from board members on these minutes? I, I have a couple myself, but I'll defer to others if anyone else has anything. Okay. Okay. I'm, I'll just, a couple things. On the May 5th minutes, on page two, item five, the last sentence, I think that should say, Mr. Testane, seconded the motion, which carried unanimously, so if we can just make that correction? Oh, I, I also have, I, I think another technical correction on page five of these minutes. The very first paragraph on the top of page five, this is referring to a statement by Angelus Papa George and the Air Conditioning Project. And the sentence reads, he said, he meaning Mr. Papa George, said this is reimbursable, but the work must be done first. I think what Mr. Papa George communicated was that the work may be partially reimbursable by grant, so I, I think the record should reflect that. So instead of, he said this is reimbursable, I would suggest it say, or make a motion to change it to say, he said this may be partially reimbursable. So I guess I'll, maybe I have a motion for those two items. Seconded by Mr. Marmy. Mr. Walsh, did you have a comment?
Yeah. So you're talking under number 10, is that correct?
Yeah. 12. Number 12. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
So number 12 carries over to another page?
Yeah.
Yeah, and the top of the second page. So I, I think that's the, you know, the air conditioning and, and obviously the, you know, the, the project is not fully reimbursable. We talked about that we hope we will get a grant for a part of it.
Yeah. I thought he said, I'm just saying, that it wasn't reimbursable, but he knew, but may, maybe, maybe I have that wrong. But I didn't think we were gonna get reimbursed for the air conditioning portion of it, but maybe, maybe I'm wrong.
Didn't they con, I thought Ms. Kupchak had contacted the state and had had conversations, and it wasn't, it had been reimbursable in the past, but now there was a question, but we're hoping that it's reimbursable. That's my recollection.
And I do recall that, Ms. Marmy, and I do, do recall that she, she made a call about it, and I'm not sure whether she had a full response yet, so I don't know. I mean, Jared, is this reimbursable? Do you know yet?
So whether or not this particular project is, and, you know, depending on the available resources at the state level, there is $75 million for indoor air quality in schools that was authorized to be bonded. So, and I think, I don't remember if it was that meeting or another one, but Angelus did refer to that, and I don't know, I don't know if he knew the dollar amount at that point in time, but we, we have since looked at the, the budget, which also had the capital plan in it, the state budget capital plan, and there is $75 million for that.
Okay. I'm fine. Ms. Marm.
Yeah, and I think, Mr. Walsh, I think we, I recall you may have asked this question, that part, it's part of the reason why we wanted to approve the whole appropriation, because by doing that, there was a possibility that we may get grant funding if some is available. So again, my, my suggested wording is, he said this may be partially reimbursable. Maybe.
Okay. I'm, I'm willing to support your change. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So we, I think we have a, a motion on that. Are there any other comments on, on these minutes? Okay. All right. So can we then vote to approve the, let's see, the two amendments that I mentioned, inserting Mr. Testane's name, and then that wording change on item 12? All in favor of that? Okay. Thank you. That is unanimous. Okay. And so then, can I have a, we can move to approve these minutes as amended on, for May 5th, 2022. All in favor? Okay. Thank you, everyone. That is unanimous. All right. So we can move on to the next set of minutes. Sorry, I'm scrambling for paperwork here. Let me just pull them up. Okay. So the next minutes are for May 17th. Does anyone have any comments on these draft minutes? Okay. I, I have one item, and I, I did actually go, I was, I was confused by the, by what was said here, so I did actually go back and, and review the meeting tape. So my comment relates to item six, and it's the end of the last paragraph of item six. And this is, this is where, this was in relation to a discussion about vacancies. The last sentence says, Chairwoman Lori Charlton requested an update on VERUP at the next meeting. I think what I asked for was, I requested an update on budget savings from historical vacancies at the next meeting. So I would make a motion to change, change the wording of that last sentence to reflect that. Yes, it could say, Chairwoman Lori Charlton requested an update on historical budget savings from vacancies at the next meeting. Can I have a second on that? Mr. Curley? Okay. Questions from board members on that? Okay. All right. So can we vote on that amendment? Does anyone else have anything on these minutes? Okay. So can I take a vote on that amendment? All in favor? Okay. Thank you, everyone. That is unanimous. If there are no other comments, we can vote to approve the amended minutes from May 17th, 2022. All in favor? Aye? Okay. Thank you, everyone. Okay. So we will move on to item 15, to hear, consider, and act on any communications. Mr. Schmidt, do you have anything for us?
No. Just to say that I have a feeling that we may be getting together at some point over the summertime, but until then, everybody have a good summer.
Yes, I'm guessing that's the case. In fact, when I, when I read the minutes, when I was reviewing the minutes, I was reminded there were a number of follow-up items in here, including, just for the board's reference, a question on the status of Penfield Pavilion. I had promised to put that on the agenda for tonight's meeting. The administration wasn't ready to discuss it tonight, but I do understand it's on the Board of Selectment agenda in their next meeting. So I think Mr. Schmidt's probably right. I imagine we probably won't get through the summer without something coming up, so. Mr. DeWitt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last, in our last meeting minutes, Mr. Schmidt brought up this WPCA issue with the tank lid blown off, which seemed, seemed pretty severe, and I've spoken to a couple people in WPCA. I mean, it's a pretty big deal, I guess, right? So is there any update on that? I, I kind of assumed we would get some kind of update when we were, because the, the impact seemed to, could be in the millions of dollars with these digesters or whatever the heck is called, right?
Mr. Schmidt?
So not too much more to say, except that the WPCA has a consultant who is putting together an RFP to do the work, and the work which would include the cleaning of the tank, the transport of the material, and it, and also fixing, fixing the tank itself, fixing the cover, and all of that. And so the, you know, that's where it stands right now. There aren't any, as of right now, there are any large costs being incurred, but we're following the process and, and getting a consultant to put together the RFP to go out to bid.
Jared, have we put an insurance claim in?
Yes.
And has it been accepted? Anything you can report, whether this will be covered? Has it been accepted as a claim?
The, the only, it's been accepted as a, it's, it, they're processing it, and they are sending out adjusters and, and the like to evaluate the situation, so that's where it's at now. But the claim is in, it's in process, and we don't have any final word on it yet.
From talking to our broker, does it appear that we would be covered for this claim? From talking to our broker, does it appear that we would be covered for this claim?
You know, I have, and most of the conversation has been, because he's been on, he's actually been, the adjuster's been on site, and so most of the conversation, I believe, has been with Mr. Boney and the adjuster. And so I, I would need to follow up with him to find out more about, more details, if they've been hinting at how it might be going.
All right. Would we, Madam Chairwoman, would we be able to get an update, put this on the agenda for an update at the next meeting, whether it be over the summer or first meeting in September?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any other questions, comments? Okay. If not, I just want to point out that it is 9:20, and this might be the earliest adjournment ever in my tenure on the Board of Finance, so.
Can we make it a rule to do this for every budget meeting?
Well, Mr. Testane, I hope so. We have to attend Mr. DeWitt's budget, budget meeting and see how we can get there. Anyway, I will take a motion to adjourn. Ms. Marmian, seconded by Mr. Stark. All in favor? Aye. All right. We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Have a good summer.